I don't think we've done anything yet, but you're welcome to hand it out to them now. And then.
Okay, everybody, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 5:30. Thank you. I would like to welcome all the public. My name is Sharon Leckey. I'm the vice chair of the commission, and I'm going to be filling in for our chair tonight. Would everybody like to introduce themselves? Oh, here. I'm Rachel Stummich.
Kelly Madden.
Dennis Schmendling.
Thank you. Zach, is there anything else you need for the record? Okay, great. So we'd like to invite, we're going to have a public comment period here. So for the first hour, we're going to give 30 minutes to each side of the applicant, and then, Zach, you're giving me a funny look. Am I okay?
Yeah. I have a script that will sort of set the stage for everything.
Okay, go ahead then. I'll turn this over to Zach. Thank you.
All right. For the record, Zach Arihak, an associate planner with the Community Development Department. So this is the time and place set for a public meeting on the Central Oregon Canal nomination to the National Register of Historic Places. The proposed section is between Ward Road and Gosney Road. In a few moments, I will give a brief presentation on the proposed district and the applicable review criteria. But before we get started, there are a few updates to the agenda in the meeting packet. First of all, we've received quite a few emails and other correspondences that I would, I'm going to hand out to the commission. So these were received from staff, and I did my best to forward them via email to you all, but I have hard copies as well. So Peter, if you can just, there's quite a stack here. So we have emails from property owners. We also have a letter from Central Oregon Irrigation District that was submitted in response to the nomination, and a letter from a law firm representing the proponents of the canal. So this is for your review. Understand, there's a lot to digest, but we can, we can talk about next steps moving forward. The second item to update the agenda on is that I will be calling Ian Johnson with the State Historic Preservation Office. Him and his colleague, Jason Allen, will be calling in to provide an overview of what their expectations, the state expectations are for the HLC to review and comment on, on the proposed nomination. Before I give Ian a call, I'm going to go through a few items here. Earlier today, staff met with the Board of County Commissioners regarding the procedures of the nomination review. On Friday, as I mentioned, we received an email from Stephen Leday with the law firm Miller, Nash, Graham &amp; Dunn on behalf of the local resident, Alita Warren, regarding the proposed canal. The letter attachment was 200 pages in length. We received it middle of Friday, so staff hasn't had a full opportunity to review the, all the attachments and whatnot, but I believe that the applicant can speak to this letter if they, if they so desire. The Board of County Commissioners believes Mr. Leday's conclusion misinterprets county code and overstates the HLC's task. Thus, the board has respectfully submitted a letter to clarify the HLC's authority to both consider the subject nomination and provide its requisite report to SHIPPO. So Peter, I don't know, I don't think, did we hand out the letter in that stack? Or you, all right. So Adam has handed that letter directed to the commission, to the Historic Landmarks Commission. This is from the Board of County Commissioners, was reviewed today. If the public is interested in reviewing this letter, there are copies available on the table over there. The board has no intention of, in summary, I'll summarize the letter real quick. The board has no intention of requiring the HLC to conduct a quasi-judicial land use hearing for a case such as this when federal law clearly does not require such a process. As opposed to being a decision maker, the HLC's role is simply to prepare a report as to whether the property and the HLC's opinion meets the criteria of the National Register. Rather than the complexities of a quasi-judicial land use hearing, federal law instead imposes the far less onerous requirement that the HLC should prepare its report after providing a reasonable opportunity for public comment. Staff suggests the commission receive oral comments this evening and continue to receive written comments until Friday, April 20th. Then continue with the second public meeting on April 30th for the commission to deliberate and complete the state provided criteria sheet, which was also handed out to you all. The board requests the HLC follow county code and federal statute, and after providing reasonable opportunity for public comment, prepare a report detailing the HLC's opinion as to whether the subject nomination meets the criteria of the National Register. Beyond noting state statutes. Beyond noting state statutes regarding public meetings, the Board leaves the HLC's discretion, to the HLC's discretion, all other determinations as to how best to perform the aforementioned tasks, including whether or not to request written public comments, or instead host a public meeting. So at this time, do any of the members of the Commission have any ex parte contacts or conflicts of interest that they need to declare? And I'll also mention that, and this is a new nomination, so there is one thing that Pat Clewer, the lady who submitted the nomination, forwarded to the Commission as a nomination timeline, and we want to be clear, and staff wants to be clear, that what the Commission is reviewing tonight is the latest nomination. It's not a review of the entire process, but what is before you at hand today, what the State Advisory Committee on Historic Preservation is reviewing on their June meeting. It is also up to the Commission to determine if time limits are appropriate for receiving oral public comments this evening. So you can decide that in the coming moments, and if the Commission, if it's all right to call Ian now, and he can give an overview of the state's expectations, and then we can jump into the presentation and move forward with how you want to run the meeting. Does that work? All right.
For the record, Peter Gatawski, Deschutes County's Planning Manager. As Zach's preparing to call, I just want to acknowledge the written testimony by name, so there may be people in the audience here that want to make sure their written correspondence was received. So Zach did mention the Central Oregon Irrigation District provided an April 13, 2018 correspondence that has a letter and looks like several exhibits. And then on Saturday, let's see, Janice and Dave Turner submitted an email to Zachariah, so that's been formally entered. Pat Clewer provided a, I don't have it in front of me, but we pass it out. It's an outline of, a timeline of this process. I think it's approximately six pages, but it details, I think, the inception of this project. I want to say 2014 to date, but Pat can correct me, because again, I don't have it right in front of me. Rachel Collins and Charles Goss provided an email to Zachariah on April 15. Let's see, Julie Reber provided email today just before 1:00. Pat submitted, I have two others submitted also. In addition to the timeline, there's an email, she submitted just before 3:00. Let's see, let's see if I can summarize it. Again, it looks like it's got a map of the canal and.
It's the mailing list.
The mailing list.
The mailing list.
And then, second email, I guess that's a duplicate. Okay. Just want to, okay, that's everything I have. Great, thank you.
Okay. I'll call Ian. He should be expecting us.
Zachariah, before you call, excuse me, Commissioners, this is Adam Smith, Assistant Louis of Council for Deschutes County. I just want, there's been a lot of conversations, correspondence with the county about ex parte contacts. I just wanted to take a quick minute. And I'm assuming, of course, since this is a resuminal, that you are all familiar with the project, at least when it came through in its first iteration. Is that correct? But other than being familiar with that project at that time, and meetings of the project at that time, there have been no communications, no ex parte contacts that anybody needs to disclose at this point?
No.
Just for the record, all Commissioners are indicating not. Thank you so much. Sorry to take up the time.
Hello, this is the Oregon SHIPPO.
Hi, Ian. This is Zachariah with Deschutes County Planning. I'm here with the Historic Landmark Commissioners in a public meeting. You are on a conference call right now. Can you hear us all right?
Yeah, we can hear you just fine. I'm here with Jason Allen from my staff.
All right. So I will turn over the meeting to our Vice Chair, Sharon Leckey. But as we discussed previously, if you could provide an overview of what the state's expectations are, and then be available for Commissioner questions, that would be great.
Excellent. Yes, we could do that.
Thank you.
This is Sharon. Go ahead, proceed.
All right. My name is Ian Johnson. I'm the Associate Deputy State Historic Preservation Officer. Do I need to state our business address? Okay, great. And I'll have Jason Allen introduce himself.
I'm Jason Allen. I'm the Servant Inventory Coordinator for the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office.
So as Zachariah mentioned, we're here to speak to the role that certified local governments play in the nomination process for properties nominated to the National Register. I thought I'd just kind of start with some definitions and an overview first, make sure we're all on the same page. So the Certified Local Government Program is a partnership program between the federal, state, and local governments that enables local jurisdictions to use federal pasture funds for local preservation activities. And of course, Deschutes County participates in the program. Participation in the National Register process is one of the rules that CLGs play, and that review process touches all levels of government. Starts at the local government for local review, and then it's reviewed by the State Advisory Committee on Historic Preservation that looks at the recommendation of the local government. And that body is a nine-member governor-appointed body with expertise across the preservation field. Their recommendation goes to my supervisor, who is the State Historic Preservation Officer, who considers the two previous recommendations, the local government and the committee, makes a recommendation then to the Park Service, who looks at all the information at that time, including public comment, and then makes an independent decision. The National Park Service, they're the final decision makers on whether something is or is not listed in National Register of Historic Places. And as I mentioned before, the whole comment process starts with the certified local government to begin with. We sent the nomination document, our comment sheet, and a letter inviting comment on, to the Commission on April 9, which should all be sitting in front of you. And I was asked really kind of quickly to go through, when we send that information to you, what exactly are we asking for? So this is all established in our participation rules, which the county has entered into an agreement with us for the program, and that kind of outlines the process. And according to the rules, if the CLG chooses a comment, and I would say chooses to, if they're not required to, but we strongly encourage it, and we find the comments incredibly valuable. But the comments be submitted to our office within 60 days of the notice, and that allows it to be considered by our State Advisory Committee, who really finds those comments very useful. Preparation of a report on a form provided by SHIPPO, and that's that checklist that we've sent that has the proper name and address on it, and then provide a reasonable opportunity for public comment. And that's not defined in the rules. It just says a reasonable opportunity, and that's pulled from the federal rules. The rules do not require a specific review process. We leave that up to the local governments. It does not set specific requirements for the reasonable opportunity for public comment standard, doesn't mandate a site visit, and it does not require the CLG to respond. However, within that, CLGs can choose to do site visits. They can choose to set up whatever review process that meets their local standards. In fact, we do expect CLGs follow whatever their normal processes are for similar circumstances where they're being asked to comment on action by the state or federal government. So whatever you would do in a similar circumstance, do the same. For the comment for the SHIPPO report, basically what we're asking is the Landmarks Commission to use their specific local expertise to answer two broad questions. The first, is the property eligible for listing in the National Register? Does it meet the criteria? And secondarily, is the property adequately documented? You know, it makes sense, you know, the assertion that the document is making, is it backed up? Does it have the right information? Is it using the right resources? Do the maps and other things kind of fit together? You can include other information if you like. Sometimes Commissions like to speak to other issues other than those two, and that's certainly something a CLG can do. However, my review committee can only consider those two narrow questions. Is it eligible? Is it adequately documented? We wouldn't tell the local government what they can and cannot put in a comment letter to us, but do be aware the charter of my committee is actually fairly limited. The comment sheet that we provide kind of is a guiding document, and that does qualify as the report, which is required when commenting back. It's kind of a tool to be used. We would invite additional comments, and I believe in the last round, on a previous document, you guys provided some really great comments in a couple of letters that were very detailed, that kind of laid out your thinking. That's always very useful for all the subsequent reviews. But if you have that sheet, you'll see there's five questions asked you to discuss, major alterations and additions, is the description adequate, is the discussion of significance and context, is that adequately developed, are they using the right facts and resources and supporting materials, and then ask you to make a recommendation at the end. We would invite any Landmarks Commission to, you know, first of all, complete this form, or if they want to include a more in-depth report and include other documents, whatever you think the next series of decision makers really need, go ahead and include that. But we would at least like to see this form completed. And in most jurisdictions, we'd just complete this form. But again, the more information you can provide is, that's actually quite useful. So talk a little bit about the objection process and why you're seeing this document again. So as you're all probably aware, your Commission and the County Commissioners, and last time, run through this nomination, objected to the nomination, which halted the process, and then it's coming back on the agenda as an objection was filed. One of the things, I think there's a fine nuance, is in objecting, which we need an objection both from the County Commissioners, your chief elected official, and Landmarks Commission, is that the objection is to the nomination document, not actually the property itself. So what that looks like is someone can go ahead and renominate a property if they've made a substantive change to the nomination document, and that's exactly what's happened here. That document has been pretty substantively changed. And so basically, we have another run at this process, and that's the document you're looking at now. I've asked Jason to kind of go at a very high level and kind of run down some changes to draw your attention to, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to him.
Okay. So generally speaking, the document was edited by a professional, technical editors, resulting in language clarification, some reordering of elements in the narrative significance section for clarity, things like that. Some narratives were moved between Sections 7 and 8 as appropriate, Section 7 being the descriptive element, and Section 8 being the significance element. Within Section 7, classification of features were revised to stay within the guidelines of the National Park Service, generally around what should be combined or distinguished in counting individual features, and this results in a slightly different number of total features in the district. There was also clarification on contribution and non-contributing and non-contributing properties, including some narrowing of dates of construction for some features, provision of dates for others, resulting in revised contribution and non-contribution totals. The addition of a table on pages 15 to 19 provides a lot of clarity around this, and that was added in this draft. There's also related, sorry, that's kind of related to a change in Section 8 regarding the definition of the period of significance, which was revised from 1903 to 1921 in that first draft, to 1905 to 1937 in this most recent draft. It also added a comparison of the physical nature of this stretch of canal to other segments of the same canal in order to establish the relative character of the nominated segment, and the canal description was clarified to include the ditch rider road explicitly as part of the canal structure and to provide a description of it. Section 8 was revised, the period of significance revised from, as I said, 1905, or to 1905 to 1937 to be in line with National Register guidelines. Justification of the period of significance was likewise revised. The summary paragraph was added in Section 8, distinguished from the narrative and relevant assertions of significance moved from last in Section 8 in the first draft to the summary paragraph in this draft. The Section 8 also was revised to clarify the relationship between the canal and the development of the area, distinguishing between relationship of irrigation generally and the development of Central Oregon canal specifically. That's mostly having to do with attribution or solidifying the relationship between the canal development and specific settlements or cities, as opposed to the general area for irrigation. Comparative analysis was also added, comparing the Central Oregon Canal Historic District to the Bressada Ranch segment, which was determined eligible by the National Park Service, and to other canal systems as well. This draft also expands on and clarifies the settlement narrative to include additional information discovered since the first draft. Section 10, the boundary description and justification, the boundary justification specifically was revised and expanded upon, and then at the end of the nomination, additional information provides a map keyed to the feature locations and the features as listed out in Section 7, again, for clarity.
So that's kind of a lightning speed round through kind of what we had to say, kind of covering the program and what we're asking CLGs to do in their review nominations and the changes to this specific document. We can answer any questions you have at this time.
Are there any questions from the Commissioners? Yeah, we have one. Peter?
Ian, this is Peter Gatawski, respectfully asking, just if you would clarify the appeal process with our current process today. I think there's been some confusion. There's been some statements made by Mr. Ledet regarding the impression that somehow Deschutes County has veto authority, and I'm using that term straight from a letter that was submitted to the county on Friday. Can you just talk about, you touched on the first process with the objections, if the objections between the Board and the HLC are in sync with one another, but can you just touch on what happens if this process goes forward under that hypothetical? Or any, maybe it doesn't matter, regardless, if the votes in unison, what is that appeal process as it goes forward to the State Advisory Committee on Historic Resources or Historic Preservation?
Sure, sure. So basically, at this point, the Landmarks Commission has, they can support the nomination, say that it's eligible, it's adequately documented as it sits before them. They can say that they support it, but they have comments or things they'd like to see corrected, or they can say that they object, and then provide reason for that. If the Commission objects, and the Board of County Commissioners chooses to object as well, that, and we receive those recommendations in writing, we pull the nomination from the next agenda. Now, any person has the opportunity to provide us a letter that says that they object to that action. The federal regulations are completely undeveloped for this area. So all they need to do is provide us a letter that says that they object to us pulling the document, and it goes back on the agenda. However, the comments from the County Commissioners and the comments from the Landmarks Commission do go forward to the State Advisory Committee for their consideration and the consideration of everyone along that process. I wouldn't call it a veto power. I would say it's more of an administrative speed bump, the way that it's structured. The comment I've received is like, well, what's the substantive, you know, how substantive it is that if it can just be put back on? I don't have a good answer for that. What I can tell you is that was the answer when we researched it with the National Park Service, who's doing a very literal reading of the statute. And I would emphasize that unfortunately, the feds, even though this has been on the books since the 80s, never got a chance to do administrative rule writing. So as it sits now, if there is the objection from both the County Commissioners and the Landmarks Commission, as there was prior, we would, with our new understanding, promptly pull it off the agenda. If we received a written objection to that action, we would put it back on the agenda, but any comments received would go forward through the entire review process. Does that answer the question, Peter?
Yes, thank you for the clarity.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Zach?
All right. Yeah, we can end the call with Ian.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you. You have a good meeting.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. So next, I have a quick.
Can I bring a keyboard?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. I have a quick PowerPoint presentation just to describe the very high-level review of the canal. the canal and go over the review criteria. All right, so this is a map of the county. The proposed canal is located east of the city of Bend and south of the highway. The district boundary is from Ward Road to the west, Gosney Road to the east, and averages between 50 feet from the centerline of canal, and the nomination packet describes as it being 34 to 78 feet in width. The selected National Register criteria contained in the nomination is criterion A, which states the proposed nomination is associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of our history. Evaluation categories, which again, I encourage the commission as well as the public, if they provide any oral comments, is to be mindful of these categories, as this is what the HLC is asked to respond to. So integrity is the first criterion, and the applicable questions are, are there any possible integrity issues, and if so, have they been explained? Have there been any major alterations or additions, any new materials that have been added? Has the setting been altered? The next criterion is description. Is the nomination description of the district adequately described? Have contributing and non-contributing features been clearly defined? Is anything missing? The next is significance and context. Has the appropriate criterion been used? Has it been justified? Is the case for significance adequately made? Facts and sources. Are the appropriate and best sources used within the nomination? Are key dates and facts accurate? And lastly, supporting materials. Are additional materials sufficient? This speaks to adequate photos, maps, drawings, et cetera. And here is our schedule as of today, and again, it's up for the commission to decide how you want to move forward. Today, April 16th, is obviously the first review of the nomination. As I mentioned in my script earlier, that staff recommends the commission, given the volume of the application materials, and the amount of information the commission has to digest, we recommend that you keep the record open until the end of, close of business day this Friday. I can receive comments and continue to forward them to the commission. Then we can meet again on April 30th, two weeks from this evening, for the HLC to continue a public meeting. We would propose that this is specifically for deliberations, where staff could sit down in a public setting with the commission and go through each of the criterion and fill out the form together in a public setting.
Zach, does it need to be the same people here? Because I'm going to be out of town until the 5th of May, so I don't know if it's going to be, possible to move the date, or if that's a problem, but I just wanted to say.
For the, it would be great to have everybody that was here, but recognizing that you are an ex-officio member, the full commission is, would need, we at least need three people here.
Okay, thank you, all right.
The board of county commissioners have also been asked to review the nomination. Staff is working with county administration to select a public meeting date to present the nomination packet in front of them and decide how they want to proceed, so that that date is to be determined. And then the last bullet point I have up there is that the State Advisory Committee on Historic Preservation is meeting on June 22nd, so we need to be mindful of submitting comments, hopefully well in advance of that meeting, so that the state committee has an opportunity to review. So with that, I think our director, Nick LeLac, has a few comments.
I do. Thank you, Zachariah. For the record, Nick LeLac, Deschutes County Community Development Director. I'm in, I guess, the unfortunate position of just having to respond to some of the things that Mr. Lade stated in his record, because they're in the record, and so they require a response, otherwise they'll continue to be presumed the case. So the first is that the integrity of the county's legal and public process is paramount to processing of the proposed nomination and to all applications. It's absolutely critical, and we are committed to a legal, transparent, fair, and inclusive process in the county's consideration of this process. It is absolutely critical. The county and CDD did not in any way attempt, or at any time, to attempt to undermine this nomination. We didn't do so in the previous application, and we have not done so on this one. The county, and specifically the Community Development Department, we have no bias in favor of the Central Oregon Irrigation District or COID. Prior communications, which have already been discussed a bit, and contacts involved both COID representatives and individual property owners supporting the nomination. I recall on the trail, we had a number of visits from individual property owners, and they were terrific visits, very informative, and they shared their perspectives and insights on the canal, and those were very, very informative, as were the comments by COID's representatives. The letter states that we reached out to COID, it's on one of the first pages. Yes, of course we did. COID needs to be involved in the process, is part of a fair, transparent, and inclusive process. COID owns the canal proposed for historic designation. The property owners were involved in the development of the nomination, and so it was terrific to have their information.
They don't own the canal. They don't own the canal.
Okay, so, okay, so, okay, I may be wrong, they don't own the actual canal. I know they own the property underneath it.
No.
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, you're correct. The property owners own the property underneath it. Yes, yes, no, so, sorry.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, thank you. So, yes, I apologize for the confusion.
Then we'll open for public discussion. Thank you.
So, if somebody proposes an application, and it has a direct effect on another party to that application, we will reach out to that party. This happens regularly. Last fall, we had a resort developer initiate, remand from the Land use Board of Appeals. We have a very short timeframe in which we have to process that. So what do we do when we get the information? We immediately reach out to the appellant in that case, so that they are involved in that process, to make sure that they understand the timeline, the process, the procedures going forward, so that all parties have the same information as we begin the process going forward. There was no attempt whatsoever by our department to coordinate on a position with COID. The letter alleges, and I'll say that it was my email that was referenced, that we looked at to COID as the expert in the history of canals. Well, as a starting point, that we recognize that Ms. Clewer prepared the application. She is a notable, respected historic preservationist in this region and has extensive experience here. We absolutely respect that, so we had her information. At the same time, when the Pilot Butte Canal was designated a couple of years ago, we understood, and we learned during that process, that COID had hired a firm to study all of their canals in their system, and they were working with SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, on that process. It was not completed at the time. So we knew that that study was underway during that process. At the start of this process, we didn't know what the outcome of that was, and so the purpose of my inquiry to COID on the conclusion of that study was to find out what was designated, was what was designated, the only ones that were eligible? Were there others, but they weren't proposed? Were there, we didn't know what the conclusions were. So my question was, and it's clearly stated in this letter, was do we have historic preservationists that are in conflict? Are they consistent? I didn't know. I have no bias that COID's expert is the expert. I'm just trying to understand, what is the range of opinions here? And here's a perfect example. We have this happen all the time, where we have a developer or a property owner that proposes a project. They hire a traffic engineer to conduct a traffic study. They may conduct a wildlife biologist to conduct a, or prepare a wildlife habitat management plan, hire wildfire experts, or fire department, or somebody that is, has expertise in fire to create, prepare a wildfire mitigation plan. At the same time, we can have a concerned group of neighbors, or an advocacy organization, or a state agency, that they submit their own traffic study prepared by a traffic engineer, a wildlife biologist, wildfire experts. This happens regularly, and so our goal as staff is to have all of the information in order to present it to the commission, to the board of county commissioners, to the planning commission, to a hearings officer. We're not taking a position on those, because in many cases, we're not the experts in those areas, and we're not taking a position. But our goal is to make sure that you have all of the information before you to make that decision. When staff provided information to the board in meeting packets, we provided new information that had not previously been provided. The board did receive a number of emails, very thoughtful emails, from many people in this room, as did you, on the qualities of this canal to be proposed. So, I believe that the commissioners' comments that are referenced here were for the same intended purpose as those that I've mentioned to staff, is to gain information, to learn everything possible about this, so that they can make informed comments and/or recommendation during the process that they have this issue. As issues came up during the review of the prior application, et cetera, and there's references to meetings between SHPO and the county, et cetera, in December, we participated in such discussions, again, to understand and execute the legal process forward. It was not our intent to halt the nomination in any way, shape, or form. This was new to us, we didn't know the process, we were relying on state expertise, we weren't trying to, again, halt or influence or anything else. We're aiming to learn what the legal process is going forward and to execute that process. So, other issues, but I think it was just very, very important, because I believe that the integrity of our department and in the processing of this and all applications is essential, and I apologize for the errors that I made earlier about who owns the canal and the property underneath. That wasn't the thrust of my comments, so just needed to get that on the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick.
To the chair.
This is Kelly Madden, and I just wanted to say that something, is this a good time to talk about the site visit thing? Can, or no, not now?
No.
Okay, well, okay, sorry, Nick, I'll talk about it later. Thank you.
Okay. So Zach, are you going to set the procedures in for the?
Yeah, I was going to ask you, Chair Lacte, how you would like to proceed, recognizing that you, as the acting chair in the commission, get to decide how to receive comments.
So what my recommendation is to the commissioners is that we follow the typical public hearing format, so we'll allow 30 minutes for the applicant, so, you know, the nominee first, and then COID, and then we'll open it up for public comment, and you two will get three minutes as individuals and public comment. And please let me know if you can understand what I'm saying. Okay. All right, so are we ready, is the applicant ready to proceed? I know, I wanted to give you a minute there. Pat, did you have anyone else you'd like to join you? You're welcome to, you know, at the tables. Okay.
So it's up here. Will this view work for you, Pat?
Oh, perfect. Now to move.
To scroll down, you can use two fingers.
I may have to, we have to, it's hard to do that.
Okay. Yeah, just let me know. Commissioner Lacte, what were the time limits that you set?
Thirty, is that what I understood?
Yep. And I'll have a timer here to help.
Pat, let me know when you're ready.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. I'm Pat Clewer, and I'm the preparer of this nomination. It's about the 12th nomination I've done, the third historic district nomination that I've done, and I'm pretty proud of it. It's got three years, pretty much full-time work in it, has the longest bibliography in the history of nominations in the state of Oregon, including the Bridges nomination. It's got hundreds of footnotes, and most sources, as I'm sure you've read the ones I dropped off, are actually primary resources. I do not go to history books that are people's memories, other than to have clues to look for where they might have gotten that information. So I hope that you appreciate the scholarship that's involved in it. People say the darnedest things about this nomination, and so I'm really thrilled to be able to be welcomed here and to give you a presentation, also have adequate time to answer questions for you. I really am happy and pleased with this opportunity. I just got back from a trip early this morning at 2:00 from back east, where I met with some of my several dozen first cousins, who pronounced me the most ridiculously detailed person they've ever met in their life, even though we grew up together. And they say, you notice specific things, even in a room or about us, that no one would ever notice, so I apologize, but that definitely has carried over to my work. But just to be me, I've got to tell you, this nomination actually started in June 1991. Do you guys remember what happened then? In June 1991, Dwight A. Smith, one of my heroes, one of my mentors, who was Historic and Cultural Resources Specialist for Oregon Department of Transportation, wrote a document that's online, that's called "The Historic Context: The Development of Irrigation in the Bend Area." That really was the basis of this whole thing. It was before my time, I was on the planning commission in Washington County at the time with different issues. Although it is a short document, it had an impact on your commission. When it started, and the commissioners were asked to inventory the first time all of the historic resources in the county, the canals were like the first thing they thought about, because they really changed not only the history of tonight's meeting, but of the history of why we're here tonight, and the whole history of the county. So in 1992, just a few months after Dwight's report hit, they said, we need to really follow up on this and have an adequate report. No one has ever written a good scholarly report on the canals in Deschutes County. So they applied for their first CLG grant, and guess what it was for? This huge book written by Michael Hall, paid for with National Park Service money, called Irrigation Development in Oregon's Upper Deschutes River Basin, 1871 to 1957, as start context statement, and it was published on August 31st, 1994. Michael helped me write the Pilot Butte Canal segment just northeast of the city limits of Bend, and I could not have done it without him, because he had not only all this memory of what he had researched way back in the 90s, but he had all kinds of new information, and he's as not-so-about details as I am. But in 1992, people like Ray Bennett, Linda Clark, Martin Hanson, Marjorie Smith, Yol Reuel Leviter, Don Stevens, architect, these people were the ones that said, we have got to do this, and we've got to figure out how to preserve our canals. So, just wanted to give you that, I thought that was kind of a fun thing. So, yes, this is kind of a weird process for me too, after doing all of these, because people want to put labels on things. Reason I gave you the timeline was not to confuse you, it was actually to clarify. This nomination that's before us, and it's up on the screen with Saks help, I appreciate that, is actually right off the SHPO website tonight. There's nothing new, there's no, you know, weirdness about which version or anything. The nomination was submitted on the 10th of December, which was way before all of the craziness about stopping the nomination. So I didn't write a new nomination because of that. It was already there before that even started, and that was actually normal, because we have what's called a post SACHP revision on every nomination. And... have what's called a post SACHP revision on every nomination, and that's actually what you're seeing tonight, and we haven't changed it since then, not a word. It's just all kinds of crazy legal stuff has gone on. While I'm on legal, the only other thing I wanted to say is, there were some things that were said earlier. I, Stephen La Day does not represent me, he does not represent any of my clients, so portraying him as representing us is wrong. So, I just want to say that. We are not involved in all that. So, tonight, what I want to do is to show you some of the highlights of the nomination, and hopefully you guys have read it, but what it says is that, without the private for-profit enterprises that were essentially composed of very wealthy and very well-connected people from Midwest and East Coast, we would not have our canals. It was one of the few successful karaoke projects that were for profit in the whole Northwest. The Central Oregon Canal is 47 miles long, it's the longest one, has 530 cubic feet per second in it, that's a lot of water, that's a lot more water than most rivers have. It's a lot of water. It's irrigating, and when you think of irrigation, one of the fun things I found was I actually went to Deschutes County Circuit Court, and actually went over the court records, read every one of them, from adjudication of water rights over time, because, as you know, the river's overextended, and people have to prove that they have water rights. In those documents, they've painstakingly drawn maps of where the water rights are, and a lot of La Day people just think, "Well, if you have 40 acres, you have 40 acres of water rights." Not so, because they don't issue water rights where you have rock, or if at the top of your hill, and places like that. So, if you look at these maps, they're very spotted, and then, you know, if you think of them in reverse, it also tells you where land is not farmable. So, anyway, they're in the nomination, under the figures, and under the section of Section 8, where I explained why we have an end of period of significance in 1937, it's really interesting, because that's when the land had been sold to the settlers that was farmable at that time, and segregationless. So, that's, we started the period of significance a little bit later, because we realized that the actual construction of the stretch of canal that's being nominated, you know, occurred in 1905, and I have exact dates, like even days and weeks and months of all of that stuff. As far as significance goes, this was really an easy one. As you know about Section 106, on Section 106, documents and evaluations have to be submitted and concurred with. Anytime there's a potential for damage or destruction of any historic resource, the canals are not any different. So, anytime, like the Bend Parkway, when it was constructed in the 90s, there was bridging put over the Central Oregon Canal near Fred Meyer, right? So, ODOT had to do Section 106, and Dwight's, Dwight Smith's original document was because he had to do that for ODOT. So, at that point, the federal government, the state, and ODOT all agreed that, yes, the Central Oregon Canal was determined to be eligible for listing on the National Register. Each time since then, there's been any changes to that, such as the Brookswood Piping Project, they all have to do it again, and that's, again, even there with the, Section 106 was done, they again determined that the Central Oregon Canal is eligible for listing. There's in the nomination, in the summary sections and Section 8, as well as in the beginning of Section 8, I actually quote from writers who are much better writers than I am, and more eloquent, and they talk about that literally this canal changed the history of this county and even the region, that the size and length of it, the timing of it, in association with the marketing strategy of the private developers, what became international marketing, really brought the settlers here, made it a financial success for them. This was not a federal undertaking, North Unit, which feeds water up to Jefferson County, Vale, near Ontario, those are federal undertakings, this was not. This was private for profit, people don't realize that. So, anyway, with that, I want to just point out, for those who talked earlier, that when you look at boundaries, you want to, there's actually a boundary description, as Ian was talking about, and it's Section 10, looks like this, and in the boundary description, it says that the district is 100 feet wide, and that it includes the canal itself, as well as the structures around it, and it's a very, very clear boundary description there. So, on integrity, I know you, this commission was eagle-eyed in really looking at the integrity last time. It was my idea, it's actually never been done before, there are other canals in the nation that are listed on National Register, I read all those nominations, and none of them, I think, were as clear as what I came up with. And my idea was, I love tables, I love to present information on tables, I love photography, and I thought, "Let's just put them all together." So, I created a table, and put a photo of each structure, and a description of it, whether it had been altered, not altered, you know, the age, if I could know, that's what Jason was telling you about. So, I don't know if you can find that real quick, but that's something really clear now. As far as alterations, there's some in there that, you know, such as Bird's Bridge, that is no longer there, it's gone, there's, of course, the flume was there, and now it's gone, and replaced by burns, but those are actually more than 50 years old, so they're historic now. There's ongoing maintenance, and as you know, the Landmark's Commission is the decision-making body on any alterations or anything, and that's done at the local level, with local input. So, alterations can continue and should continue, and maintenance, of course, has hopefully continued for 100 years and will continue, that's all normal, that's not covered under Deschutes County Landmark's Commission Code. It's, normal maintenance is allowed, emergency repairs, there's a process in Deschutes County for emergency repairs, which is to involve the building official, if he says, "Do it", it can be in the middle of the night, you do it. Anytime life and safety is involved, that's an emergency, that's different. So, a lot of those worries go away, because we have a process for public review and emergency review. But anyway, rather than go over the whole nomination, it just, just want to summarize by saying that the stretch of the canal has the highest level of integrity. It is so fun how this settlement of this exact stretch mirrors the settlement of the entire canal, how the owners, the original owners, came from all over the world with great hopes, how many of them failed during the Depression, even before, as we expect, I mean, we get all this frost at night, we wonder if we're ever going to get a tomato this year. You can imagine what it was like with the challenges for them, but we wouldn't have much agriculture at all if we weren't for these canals, so they're really significant in our history. So, this stretch, you know, has all the features, pretty much, that I found. I drove the entire length of the canal several times, looked it on Google Earth, which I love, Google Earth, you can look at it as well. But I'd like to answer questions you have at this point.
Are there any questions from the commissioners? I wouldn't say it's questions, more like comments. Sorry. Okay. That's fine. Bye. Sorry. I'm Rachel Stemmich. I just, I want to say, I went through this, I don't know if it's a revision or a recent little, whatever you want to call it, but this, it did, it read like a story, this time, to me, and the first time around, it seemed really disjointed, and I had a hard time following, but between the table of contents, and you're right, the tables were definitely, were extremely helpful, I mean, even color photos were beneficial to have as well, but yeah, just, and the comparisons with the other irrigation districts and stuff like that, I found super beneficial, just trying to figure, figure out what's what, and so, I just wanted to say that I could, I can definitely see the effort and reconfiguration of it to really make it flow to the point where it feels like, you know, you're truly reading a history book, in a way. So, I do have, I found typos and stuff, but it's just, it's little stuff I could go through.
Actually, I found a few, just preparing for tonight, as well, mostly in footnotes, and there was one in the bibliography, so I called Jason with those today, too. But yeah, that's an ongoing thing. That's, I appreciate the comments. The one thing I should say is, in land use application, I don't know if you, how many of you have been on planning commissions or in land use, there's an application, and it goes through the process, and you don't get to keep revising it. National Register is very different. National Register has revision steps that are predictable, and so, guess what, after the SACHP meeting in June, I'll be getting another post SACHP meeting letter, and it'll still have some changes. And then, right between that one and when it's submitted to Washington DC, there's another level of revisions. So, we pick up typos all the way through, and appreciate, if you can circle yours and give them to me, then we'll get them fixed. Appreciate that, and appreciate the comments.
Any other comments?
Okay. Yeah, one thing I wanted to talk about, too, is the property ownership a little bit. I did, the reason I submitted, I didn't submit the list, it's actually from Jason Allen, the State Historic Preservation Office has the responsibility of determining and notifying owners of the canal, and so, what I submitted into the record was Jason's email that has the list, that he determined, and which parcels and who the owners are. So, I wanted to let you know about that. On the timeline, I have the previous dates of requests for revisions and all of that, so you can see, like, Pat's world was over here, and the public world was over here, so what was being said in public and what was really happening were two different things, and I think I've got the actual wording, I just blocked and pasted the actual emails, I didn't say email from, I just actually have them, so you can make up your own understanding about that. Kelly?
Yes, Kelly Madden. I'd just like to say, after reading the timeline, I felt like we've really been trying to be objective in all of this, and not use adjectives that are less than objective, and I felt like some of the wording in your timeline was very, very subjective, and you used adjectives that, you know, may not be getting what you need, or wanting what you want, or something, so I just thought, maybe if you did that again, you might want to not use words like "crazy," or, or things like that, because it could be considered a little, not very nice thing to do. Thank you.
I agree with that. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right. Well, at the end, I'd be glad to do any final wrap-up questions, or, thank you.
Thank you, Pat, for your efforts, and all your team. Okay. So, I guess they're ready, they're finished, so I'd like to invite now up Central Oregon Irrigation Canal, and it's, I'm sorry, I can't read these glasses, 6:32, so you've got basically 3:00.
Yeah, sure. How much time do you have?
You've got 30 minutes.
Oh, we missed.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it won't take that long. Craig Herell, I'm the District Manager for Central Oregon Irrigation District. Thank you for having us again. I know we've, we've kind of batted this around. We do respect our history, we understand that Pat has put in a tremendous amount of time on all the work she's done. We have some issues, though. We still disagree with this nomination at this, this location. We have many other obligations we have to balance as an operational utility. So, in nominating these, and Pat brought it up, we are concerned about operations. We're concerned about setting the precedence of historic nominations on our, on our utility. But with that, I think we also are concerned with some of the observations, and this goes back to Mr. LeLac's comment. We have a, we have a historian, Pat's a historian, and they're going to conflict, so that's where we're at. We disagree with, with a lot of the statements on the history, but I also want to remind everybody that, in looking at our districts, this section, and I think I've said it publicly, and I'll put it on the record again, we have a 20-year capital plan, this section's not even on the capital plan. So, we're trying to understand why this is so hurried. It doesn't meet our, our needs to have the historic nomination, and I'm sure there's fear out there for things that we're looking at doing in other parts of our district, so understand, that's probably where we're at, and I would love to answer questions as they come up, and I'll turn it over to Matt, as far as some of the disagreements, I think, in the nomination.
Hi, it's nice to see you again. I'm Matt Singer, I'm General Counsel for the Central Oregon Irrigation District, and with the law firm Holland and Knight. We really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you again this evening about the nomination, and I wanted to talk a little bit about, well, let me start with COID's history. Nobody disputes that the irrigation system, in total, it was, was, was and is critically important to this community, it's been part of the history of this community, and COID has committed significant resources to celebrating that history, and, and you know that, because we've been before you, with regard to the Klein Falls hydroelectric site, the efforts that are going into preserving at that site, and telling the story of that site, even though we've done a remediation, removed a 100-year-old dam, we're, we're looking at how to both preserve and tell the story of this history, but also meet the needs of, you know, changing values and a changing community, and including changing legal obligations around conservation. But, but certainly, I think, I think COID is entitled to a little recognition for the effort it's put into celebrating its history. A significant part of that is the money that COID spent, and the effort it put into the multiple property document for the canal system, which I think you're aware of, the, the district hired a well-known consulting firm, ICF. ICF is trained historians, PhD historians. Part of ICF's work was a field survey of the entire, entire length of both canals, the Pilot View Canal and the Central Oregon Canal, and cataloging of every structure on that system to identify the dates when those, when those structures were established. So, there's, there's a catalog of the entire system, and then there was a development of a framework that was intended for the purpose of identifying when there are future conservation projects, future piping opportunities. The idea behind the multiple property document was to have a catalog and a framework for deciding what sections of canal are appropriate for piping, and what sections warrant special protection and preservation because of their unique history. The nomination that's before you today just completely ignores that multiple property document. And that document went through all of the same process, it went through the State Historic Advisory Committee, the Oregon SHPO, and it went to the National Park Service, and is now, is now on the National Register. And so, part of our concern is, we have kind of competing documents. We have, we already have recognized the history of the entire system, and have a thoughtful framework for approaching future decisions. As, as Pat correctly said, any, any alterations on these canals that involve federal dollars will require what's called Section 106 consultations, because the whole thing is old, you know, so we, we acknowledge that, so there are, there are already protections in place, and the entire system now is, is covered by the multiple covered by the multiple property document. Taking the ICF survey, um, we, we, unfortunately, we wanted, when we saw this nomination come back, we wanted ICF to come back and, or to comment on this section, because they'd already surveyed this. But the fellow who did the work is now working for the National Park Service and wasn't available. So we hired another consultant, uh, JR P Historic Consulting, uh, is a, is a well-known consulting group that does, uh, historic architecture and historic analysis throughout the West and has a specific focus on water structures. And, um, we had JR P come and do a field survey of this section and, and provide a peer review, uh, that we, we submitted last week. And we, and we appreciate, there's a lot of material before each of you and, and it'll take you some time to get through that. But we encourage you to review the peer review. And, and I think it lays out some of the, from a historian's perspective, some of the problems with this nomination. And it's not to criticize the commitment of the, of the parties making the nomination or their good intentions, uh, but, but we have, we respectfully disagree with some of the content and, and some of the idea behind the nomination. Let me talk about those concerns using your checklist that you'll be using when you report to Oregon SHPO. We talked a lot about integrity the last time we were before you on the same section of canal. This, this section of canal has been rebuilt many times because of the challenging geology in the area. And so there's, there is newly installed riprap. That is, when I say newly installed, I mean installed beyond or later than the period of significance. If you, if you've visited this section of canal, you can see the difference between original riprap, which is, um, looks very carefully placed, and machine-installed riprap, which looks like a heap of rocks. And, um, and much of this canal is, is the latter. It's, it's, uh, it has been rebuilt. Burt shoot, which is described in the, in the nomination, is, it's shot creek. Shot creek is a recent, it's a, you know, it's a recent, uh, liner that, that was installed. It's not, uh, historic, uh, building material. It's a, it's a recent, you know, within the last couple decades, building material. So the integrity simply isn't, is not there in this section. Significance and context are important. This, this nomination is, is before you under criteria A. To, to fit under criteria A, the, the nomination has to demonstrate its, its significance to the area. It, it, it's supposed to be, or it's, it's claimed that it, it's tied to exploration, settlement and agriculture. Those are the, those are the areas of significance identified in the nomination. But there's really no explanation in the document tying this particular section between Ward Road and Gosney Road to either exploration, settlement or to agriculture. In fact, if you go out to this section, of all the sections of the canal, th, this section perhaps has less connection to those things than any other section. This was, this is a very arid, poor, section of canal with poor soils. So there wasn't agriculture. And in fact, I think the nomination talks about the fact that land was turned back into the irrigation district, but it was never settled, because it's a, it's a poor place to grow things. So the, under criteria A, you're really looking for what's the connection of this structure to this historical event. And, and that's missing when you look at this particular section. Certainly the canal as a whole is important to the development of agriculture in Central Oregon. But if the idea is to identify a specific section where you can stand on the banks and you can look at the canal and you can look at a hundred-year-old farm and you can see livestock and you can, you can identify the context of that history visually, it's the wrong place. You should be out in alfalfa where you can see those things, where those things all exist. That's just, it's just, that, that place simply had the wrong soil. And so, uh, there is, as JR P Historic points out, there's a real disconnect between the criterion that are listed, the exploration, settlement, agriculture, and this particular section. And I'll try to wrap my comments up. The, uh, another major concern is with the table, uh, listing supposed contributing and non-contributing structures. And the conclusions in that table, and while, while the document as a whole is wonderfully cited and has a long bibliography, there's essentially no citations as to the assertions about those structures and which, which are contributing and which are not. And they're just, are, are both historians independently concluded the same thing, which is that with the exception of portions of the canal itself, nothing else out in this section dates to the period of significance. So those headgates are all new headgates. They've all been replaced. They're all modern, uh, construction. The bridge is modern. It's a, it's, those are modern construction, uh, equipment and, and building materials. Uh, so the, the corrugated pipe, which the nomination claims it dates to the period of significance, was installed, our ditch rider remembers its installation in the last twenty years. So that section is just factually wrong. It's not correct. And, and I think before a nomination gets your recommendation, it should be factually correct. We've had two PhD historians do field surveys on that section of the canal and both ICF and JR P concluded that the, the structures in that section are recent structures. They're not contributing structures. Again, that goes to the integrity and it also goes to the supporting materials that, that really isn't citation for those conclusions. There is wonderful citation and discussion of the history as a whole. And again, we, we celebrate that history and we agree with it. We just don't agree that this particular neighborhood warrants its own separate listing beyond the, the multiple property document. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you again. Certainly, uh, people have strong feelings about, uh, Central Oregon canals and, uh, and we understand that and we appreciate it. Uh, can, can we answer any questions that you have for us?
I have a question. Can you, pardon? Yeah, Dennis Schmuddling. Can you explain the application of, or purpose for the application of shot creek and riprap?
Well, shot creek is to stop leaking into the ground and, and riprap is to stop eroding. Usually the riprap's placed on, on these corners, sediment builds up and then it forces the water into the, the banks. So then the banks start to erode away. So then riprap's placed. There are some really nice examples in this, in this section of, of hand-placed riprap that was original. We, we love that, uh, but there are other sections that, uh, have eroded away and we've had to replace. So we, we do that to maintain the canals from blowing out. Uh, there's, there's significant, uh, land that's lower than the canal in certain areas, so making sure that we don't flood homes.
This, there's been some blowouts in this section where the canal has failed. So there've been emergency repairs to this, this section.
Are those two materials, um, patchwork or is it?
Most of it's patchwork and it's, uh, you know, in this section, it's as it's needed. Uh, I, I want to say almost ten, eleven years ago, we had a lava tube cavern open up in a section, in this section that had to be, you know, we had to fully rebuild that section of canal. And the whole amount of water was going, it was during the stock run, so we had two hundred CFS going in, which is half the canal, uh, into the ground at that time. And so this stuff happens, we worry about it every day, uh, from a variety of things. It's either eroding from the water or from varmints.
Any questions or comments?
I just, I have one. Is the multiple property designation information, is that available through the National Park Service? Because I, I don't, I've never seen it.
Yeah.
And I don't know if anyone else has, but I, I'd like to.
We'll, we will submit a copy, a courtesy copy with, as a, as a supplement to our, uh, written comments. It's available online.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
If, uh, if you Googled multiple property document, Central Oregon canals, I think it, it would come up. It's called the, um, I believe it's called the CARRY Act, multiple property document. It's got a long, a very long title, but CARRY Act is in the title.
I do believe it shows up on the state and on the national parks. I think it shows up on both.
Oregon SHPO has a copy on its website.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
So at this time, we would like to invite the, uh, public to come forward and, and make comments as appropriate. Uh, each, each party will be allocated three minutes. So you're welcome to come to the table, whatever's comfortable for you with the microphone. Yes. Please state your name and then.
Um, my name is Gary Grund. I live on this section of the canal. I would like to just clarify some things that were said, so, um, maybe make them truths. We grow peaches, plums, apricots, cherries, uh, on our property to sell. We've grown alfalfa. So I, I think the people that come to buy those products from us would beg to differ that this soil is no good, uh, that you can't grow things on it, uh, because you can grow things on it. I also would like to state, um, the thing that they were talking about, that the problem they had ten years ago when the water, uh, seeped in the canal, uh, was actually caused by COID. Absolute fact. They brought out a, a track hoe with a hammer and track hosed, uh, right in front of our section, um, I don't know, for days. Now this section operated since, I don't know, nineteen oh five. After they hammered that, they then turned on the water and all the water went down a sinkhole. Okay. I'm sure that, I'd, I'd hate to even think of the amount of money that that cost all the water users on this canal to fix that thing that they caused. So, um, I do want to thank Jason Allen for coming over last summer and when he gave the talk about what qualifies for a historical section. I thought it was very informative, so I really thank him for that. Uh, it really opened my eyes of what you have to have to make that happen. There are parts that are being nominated, let's say, um, that you can take organic material and throw it against a wall and that doesn't mean it's going to stick. And it's because you have to have this evaluation, uh, criteria. So no matter how long you throw this against the wall, if the criteria's not there, it doesn't stick. What Pat has done is come up with this area that says, "This has something." It has something for future generations to come see, whether it's our grandkids or their grandkids or kids forever. I've lived here long enough to see the Pilot Butte in, gone. Uh, the Crane Shed, gone. I would love to see a section of canal that's functioning, has historic value, and believe me, it has a lot of historic value. Just come out and look at it sometime. It's there. All the things that, uh, was put into this, uh, to create farming in Central Oregon. So, um, I hope you can really consider this nomination, because it's, it's very worthwhile. And I want to thank Pat for, uh, putting forth an amazing effort, uh, making this nomination what it is. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Brenda Trowbridge. I'm one of the landowners, um, two-two-one-eight-five Bear Creek Road. Uh, my husband and I bought this property a few years ago with our small children because we wanted a piece of the old life. And, um, there's been a lot of drama and I can appreciate, as a volunteer myself, reading through stacks and stacks of correspondence. You guys are volunteers? Thank you, because this is not easy to ascertain what is true, what is fact, what was ignorance, what was foolishness? You know, it's, it's mind-boggling. And so if I say anything today that is not in line with the facts, I apologize. But I've done my best and I consider myself not an expert, but pretty well-informed in this process. And, you know, there are COID's representatives mentioned, uh, that we must be afraid or they're not sure why we've nominated this. Well, Gary did a pretty good job. It's not because I'm afraid of piping, because I understand what that process is like. I understand the steps and the hoops that have to be gone, gone through and that's not our concern. We know that nobody is going to be on board with piping this stretch. We are really concerned about preserving this little, this little slice of heaven here. And if there was some kind of, uh, peer review last week, I don't know how they would have seen most of the structure, because it's covered in water now. Last Monday it turned on, so all last week it was covered in water. My children and I walk that stretch and even inside the canal during the winter and it's amazing. You can see the dynamite blasts. You can see where those ancient Fresno scrapers, you, you can see all this, okay? And our property was supposedly, according to Jim, the retired ditch rider, he told us that it was our property, um, I believe, that had that run out. You can't tell. They did a good job repairing it. And I'm sorry, but not all the riprap is stacked meticulously. A lot of it, they just hauled it up the best they could with horses. Okay? So I just call into question some of these, um, things, because according to my research, that multiple property listing, it actually listed this section as very well-established and high integrity. But they don't want it, see? So now they're trying to pick it apart and backstep. So anyway, I just want to also call to attention, I hiked Pilot Butte for the first time about a month ago. And, um, I wanted to point out a couple things. On a placard, and I don't know who wrote this or who penned the words, but it said, and I quote, "Early settlers saw enormous potential in the area's rich and abundant native grasses. They built irrigation canals to water crops and stock and access to water brought more settlers. Ranching and farming continue to contribute to the local economy." And I can attest that that's true. Not all of the people are here that are neighbors, they don't own part of the canal, but we have, we're friends with the neighbors that owned that dairy farm that was like nineteen oh five. You can see that, they're restoring it beautifully. That's all visible from the canal. You can see, um, our neighbors also, the, the Johnsons, their grandparents bought that land and they established their own water company, which still today they run. Their grandchildren and their great-grandchildren are running it today. They don't own part of the canal, but that is all, those historic buildings, all of that. Our friends bought it over. More people are coming, because they want their children to have a little piece. We're not afraid of piping or all these things. We're afraid of missing something that's very valuable, that has a lot of integrity and it points to so much significance to our history. And we just want our children to see this. So thank you for your consideration. I think that's about all.
Hey, do we have anyone else who would like to come forward? You're welcome.
The one you all hate. I'm Alita Warren. Okay. Basically, I was just wanting to bring a few things to your.
Excuse me ma'am, could you please identify your name?
I said Alita Warren.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm not speaking very loudly. Okay. I wanted to tell you a few things that you need to consider. First of all, Craig Herell turned in a four, nom, four places where he said he was against this nomination, for four parcels. Two of those parcels are not within the historic district and should not be counted. One of them is not owned by COID. They do have one. That one, he is very possible, he very positively can say he's against it as the owner of that one property. But it is, and Matt Martin has substantiated it with what he has given the county commissioners. It is an easement and as an easement holder, there is no ownership having to do with national register. So therefore, he cannot be responding as an owner for the whole canal. He can respond for his one parcel. He can make comments as public for, you know, like I can, like others can, for you to have that information. But that is all he can have. And I just wanted to clarify that with you, because it really is private property. It is owned by forty-five distinct parcel owners and they all, forty-four of them, are for this. There's one against. Guess who? Obviously. Okay, one other thing for you to remember is that the time period of this nomination is what, nineteen oh nine? is what, 1909 to 1935? All of those blowouts that have happened have all been since 2010. Obviously, there's going to be a few things that need to be fixed, and obviously, this isn't stopping COID from repairing in like, which is basically the requirement of National Register. What they were talking about, the riprap being all nice and neat, and now it's all tossed up, is called dry stack. And dry stack is also very definitely a characteristic. Yes, I've been out there. I've walked that, the whole canal area. I know what I'm talking about. I happen to live on the Pilot Butte Historic District, so I have walked many of the canals everywhere. And I do know the MPD that they are so bragging about had many, many errors. I had this kind of chuckle when Matt Singer said that they wanted to have it perfect. Well, it's too bad, because there were a lot of errors in what they did for the downtown Redmond and for the MPD. Did you realize that the MPD has taken away your jurisdiction? They have absolutely removed what you can do, because now it's strictly up to COID. It's strictly up to every irrigation district in Oregon to decide what they want to do with their canals. And that's it. But there's no more historical review, there's no more open procedures. It's all hidden in fine print in that MPD. And there were a lot of zingers like that that were buried in there that I was questioning, but they didn't get very far, because they weren't given to the reviewing committees, because they were stopped, be it at the county, be it Chippewa, be it at National Register. There were problems with it. And I know the Bressada Ranch. Did you realize that one of the things in that MPD is that at any time, they can replace any, anything with pipes? Period. End of discussion. They can rip it up and put in pipes. They feel that a site is equal to a resource. Well, I don't. I think that the historic resource where you can actually see it is much more instructive, much more beneficial for the kids than a plaque. And that's what you've got right now, is just a plaque for the Crane Shed. And I don't want to see that happen to the canal system, because they were instrumental in the founding of Bend. Thank you.
Hi.
My name is Jenna Walden. I am a property owner on the nomination historic district, and thank you for your time. I was once a volunteer for my neighborhood association, and I can't imagine, I mean, the amount of hours sucked up, where it was rewarding, but I understand how much time you put towards this, so thank you. I want to address, I have a little thing I like to read, and I'm going to read fast because of the time limit, so my apologies. So we are here again to review our nomination for the Ward-Gosney Canal Historic District. Five and a half months ago, the original hearing occurred. Since that time, I have learned many obstacles have been thrown up to table our nomination, a nomination that is widely supported by the property owners of the proposed historic district. A public records request and attorneys have documented this mess, which demonstrates what we are up against with myriad of misinformation and opinions that are based on seemingly COID talking points. The administrative speed bump of withdrawing the nomination in January has never been used before in the state of Oregon for any nomination, ever. This is notable not only in the anomalous nature of using this to table our nomination, but the fact COID's lawyer letter came out only days after the county's inquiry to Chippewa. It definitely taints the motive. Our nomination document walks you through the historical integrity of this canal segment in 178 pages, and its integrity and historical significance is well documented. The community and property owners I've spoken with, over 30 in all, some here tonight, recognize how this stretch of the canal has remained the same for generations, with some of them having played along its banks as children nearly 70 years ago. We have invited the commission to the site several times and have not received a response or a site visit, so we hope that happens during the rest of this process. Through our public records requests, we have found quite biased statements opposing our nomination that have little to do with the historical integrity of the canal. For example, one comment was, "They just don't want their canal covered." And another commissioner's comment is, "This nomination clearly represents," and I'm quoting, "This nomination clearly represents a biased interest on the residents. This seems obvious to point out, but the people behind any nomination will be pious and supportive of their nomination." But how is this a reason to reject this nomination? A repeated objection to taking the nomination face value is that the nomination segment has too many alterations and new materials to meet the integrity criteria. I suppose they're referencing the letter COID's attorney submitted detailing repairs done since 1993 in this segment. But again, you would have to visit the site to see that the alterations are the minority components of the canal, and the majority of the canal is intact and has high integrity. But again, repair and emergencies repairs are not a reason to table this nomination. And the work session from the Board of County Commissioners in October, from Matt Martin, he told him that there are already two preserved sections of the Central Oregon Canal. This is not true. There are currently two preserved sections on the Pilot Butte Canal, but not the Central Oregon Canal. Currently, Central Oregon Canal has zero preserved sections. How is this nomination piecemeal or hostile, as Craig Hurrell states in a September 7th letter? Every property owner except for one, COID supports the nomination. In fact, COID has submitted notarized documents stating they own four parcels in the historic district, and yet they only own one. Minutes, oh, and then the property owner's support seems underweighted and COID's is overweighted. Addressing the MPD, it wasn't even registered with the historical preservation at the time of the nomination, so that wasn't a factor when we considered that. And then the MPD itself was generated from the memorandum of agreement, and as Alita pointed out, it completely shuts out this jurisdiction for evaluating historical nominations. It says, the memorandum says, "The district will edit the MPD," which is currently in its draft form. And then it goes on to say, "Following completion of the dropped MPD elements described above, the district in consultation with reclamation in Chippewa shall select appropriate segments." And then it goes on to say, "The district," and when I say the district, this is COID, "will conduct a historic properties inventory of the entirety of the district facilities and infrastructure." This memorandum of agreement, which is, underlies the MPD, shuts out your jurisdiction, and it shuts out public comments. There was zero public...
I'm sorry, continue for close-up.
The zero public process in this MPD creation. Finally, I'd like to remind that there was training in September from Chippewa on how to apply the National Register criteria for evaluation, and its core premise is that resources, properties, or happenings in history do not occur in a vacuum, but rather are part of a larger trend or pattern. And yet, one commissioner said of this nomination, "Nomination fails to make direct connection to events in early history of the Deschutes River with respect to this segment." The Alexander Drake's Canal projects brought vitality and life to Bend, and the canals have a direct connection to population and agricultural growth and history, as well as homesteading. And it's no exaggeration to say that the canals created Bend. So it leads me to wonder, not only is this nomination for the Central Oregon Canal that has broad support of the property owners, not only is this segment representative of what it has always looked like since the canal's completion, not only is this segment a short drive from the populated areas that for future generations preserve three and a half miles of the past and what brought life to Bend, not only does this segment end in an 80-acre Parks and Recreation Parcel, an East Gate Park, which ties in beautifully with this nomination. But based on the past objections, how could any stretch of our canal be supported in Deschutes County? The reflection of COID's desired outcome ensures that they'll be hostile to any preserved segment of the Oregon, Central Oregon Canal in Deschutes County, except for one, their Bressada Ranch spur, which is...
I'm going to have to call time on you, you've gone over three minutes.
Okay. Well, just for the record, I'm being...
You're finished, yeah.
I will submit the rest in written comment.
Is there anybody else? I forgot to leave this petition with y'all. This is, Zach, will you please, yeah. And then, I'm sorry, the last speaker, did you want to leave something, or are you going to submit later?
No.
Okay, thank you, and I'm sorry I had to cut you off.
My name is Gail Snyder, and thank you for allowing me to speak for the commission. Also, I can email my comments to you, I have scribbled all over them, I was going to hand them to you, but they're scribbled on now, but I would like to read them, so I stay on task here. So, good evening. Again, my name is Gail Snyder. I'm the co-founder and executive director of the Coalition for the Deschutes. We are a solution-oriented grassroots organization that seeks to restore the Deschutes River in a cooperative manner for the benefit of our river and for our broader Central Oregon community. I have often thought that the Deschutes River and irrigated agriculture have been perceived by the public as having parallel, separate histories, but as you know, those two histories are intertwined, and they are inseparable. Irrigated agriculture and canals in central Oregon go back about 100 years, while the river's natural history and that of the region's first people goes back to time immemorial. I'd like to touch on an even more recent historical moment of the river and irrigated agriculture in central Oregon. In the 1980s, there were plans to put 16 dams on the upper Deschutes, all within 15 miles of Bend. Lava Island, Dillon Falls, Benham Falls, all these places we love today would have been dammed. The dams were stopped after a multi-year series of community meetings and analysis led by Deschutes County. The 1986 River Study, and that's this, that was the final product of those meetings. As a result of this work, in 1987, the upper Deschutes River was designated a state scenic waterway. And then in 1988, 30 years ago this year, it was designated as a federal wild and scenic river. So fast forward to 1996, the Wild and Scenic River Management Plan was finalized with 17 signatories, including Deschutes County. Both of these documents discuss the need to pipe Leakey canals as a key part of restoring the Deschutes River. These two documents are just a tiny fraction of reports and studies that have written for more than 70 years documenting the demise of the Deschutes and identifying Leakey canals as part of the problem. Piping projects have chugged along for a number of years now, with some water restored to the middle Deschutes, but let's be clear, our river is dying, and it can't wait decades more. Today, our two histories of the river and irrigation are coming together in an action plan to solve problems. The solutions require piping the Leakey canals. We've paved the dirt roads that people used 100 years ago to travel through central Oregon, even though the horse races through downtown Bend on dirt roads must have been quite a spectacle to behold. But the roads were infrastructure that enabled the region to prosper and grow. So were, and so are, the canals. The canals are amazing indeed, but the price we pay to retain them is the Deschutes River, and it's a toll that we are continuing to pay every day of every year since they were built. I understand that you're tasked with preserving our recent human history, but I implore you to put this into the broader context that includes our natural history and all of our community. We can honor and celebrate the history of the past 100 years, but does it mean that we have to preserve every single aspect of it, even if it is causing us continued harm? And I would add, to consider only the history of building the canals is to overlook the history and hard work of people who have strived for just as long to protect and restore the Deschutes River. These two documents are just a couple of the signposts along the tumultuous paths that irrigated agriculture and the Deschutes River have traveled. They have helped guide us to a place where we are today, with irrigated agriculture and river advocates coming together, so that we all, so that all of us dependent on the river, fish, families, and farms have an opportunity to survive and thrive. We have a shared vision of restored and healthy river and sustainable agriculture in central Oregon. This year is the 30th anniversary of our wild and scenic designation of the Deschutes River, but our wild and scenic river is dying. It's time to restore the river, together as a community and in partnership with the irrigation districts. Please make the connection between piping and restoring the Deschutes, because all of our grandchildren deserve to inherit a healthy river. That should be their heritage. For that reason, I stand, I sit here this evening in support of central Oregon irrigation district's plans to pipe its canals. Thank you.
Thanks, Gail.
Would you like to welcome more comments? Thank you, Gail.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Kristin Nowyokian, it used to be Grund, and my father spoke earlier. And I grew up on, I was born and raised in Bend, and grew up on Bear Creek Road, and I grew up on the canal. I also grew up playing in the river. And I just wanted to say that I didn't write a whole bunch of paperwork or anything else for this, but I think preservation all around is incredibly important. I'm a very, very big advocate of saving some things for the future. I do realize our river is very important. Also, these canals are really important. We're not asking for the preservation of all of the canals. This is for a three-mile stretch of canal. And it's really important that we do remember some of our history, because once it's gone, it's gone forever. And I spend, my job right now, I do a lot of traveling the world, and some of the things that are so special to see about the places and the reasons I travel the world are to see historical places that are preserved, natural and man-made. But if some of those places are completely destroyed, then you don't get to go and see history, right? Like Rome, like everything. And these come from buildings, they also come from canals. And so I'm just standing here, because I think this is incredibly important, that we do preserve the river, but we also do preserve at least a piece of the canal, of our history. Thank you.
Other comments? You're welcome. Just like, one more opportunity, make sure we're not missing anybody. Thank you so much for your time, dedication, and passion. We truly appreciate your time and effort. Zach, do you...
Yeah, so next steps for the commission to determine are whether or not you want to continue receiving written comments, like I proposed for a week or longer, and if you want to set up a subsequent public meeting at a later date to be determined, where the commission can go through the criteria evaluation sheet and complete it in a public setting.
Discussion. What's your pleasure?
Rachel, any preference?
I'm fine with closing for written comments by this Friday. I'm fine with closing for written comments by this Friday, which would be the 20th, I think that's pretty sufficient time.
This is Kelly, I am too.
I would support that as well.
Okay, so it looks like you've got unanimous support with the timeline you proposed for-
Okay.
At least for the initial, yeah. But as far as the deliberation and review and trying to get through the form itself, I think we need to-
Talk about it.
Figure out what days were available, I think having another meeting is gonna be really beneficial for all of us, as many of us that can attend, just so we can all go through it together.
Okay.
So, but I mean, I'm fine with the April 30th date that we proposed, but we also have our regular scheduled May 7th meeting as well, I don't know if that's something we want to try to wrap up with that, or, I'd be fine doing a separate one, but it really just depends on people's availability and the timeframe, so that we can make our recommendations to ship out. So, that's something we can follow up with through email, try and figure out what's the most appropriate date for everyone.
Or do we need to resolve it here?
Commissioners, I would suggest that we keep it scheduled for April 30th, but you very well may want to continue it to May 7th, or May 14th, or something of that nature, so that, we certainly don't want to rush you in this process whatsoever, so.
Let's schedule it for April 30th, and we'll see if you're prepared to move forward at
that point, since we have other items that we can certainly discuss, one of which I'll talk about with the work plan in a few moments, but we certainly don't want to rush you whatsoever in this process.
Well, we also don't want to push the, you know, the June 22nd deadline too far either, so.
I just, one point of clarification, is the 20th reasonable time for the preliminary comment? Does the parties of interest, does that give them enough time to respond, I mean, in the greater public? Okay.
That's a good question, I was just checking with Ms. Clewer to see if she thinks for the neighborhood, maybe we can get a nod of heads, yes or no, because it's not official. Is that enough time, or a full week until the 23rd, or?
Monday at 5:00 would be better, huh?
A week, okay.
That's what I wondered, yeah.
Should we do the 23rd?
And for others on this side, that works? Okay, so, April 23rd?
So, is that a right, is there any consent to that? That'll give folks, you know, that are working to, have to write or whatever they gotta do?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so noted. So, Monday, May 23rd at 5:00 PM.
Okay.
Great.
Peter, do you have a comment?
I just, yeah, thank you. Just as we think about written submittals by Monday at 5:00, just a couple reminders that if you, there have been a few isolated cases where somebody sent an email at 4:57 and we didn't receive it until after 5:00, so you need to be mindful if you're gonna be using email to make sure we receive it by 5:00, so give yourself a few extra minutes. And then, respectfully, if there are any attachments that you are referencing, we would recommend you include them with the attachment, we had some examples where it's on a server, and there are, we were able to utilize in this meeting, it seemed pretty straightforward, but there are, it's better if the app, if the party can just submit us with the materials and minimize or prevent any mistakes that we would made by going out into server and checking a link. So, you can also print those off, and if it's easier, and provide one copy, note it to Zekaria Hack at the Community Development Department across the street at 117 Lafayette, and then we'll make the requisite copies, so just want people to be mindful that we want to make, just as Nick and Zekaria have pointed out, we want to make all this information available, but we also have to be mindful of the resources that we have.
Is there links on the county's website for that, so for people who don't know who to send it to, do they-
Zekaria, it would be the point of contact, and Zach, I don't know if you have business cards, but you certainly, if you want, you can leave your, just give everyone your phone number, as well as an email, and Zekaria can remain after this meeting officially closes to answer any questions and give people contact information. That would be great, it's a good question. Thank you.
Is there any questions from the audience on what we've just talked about? Do you review everything, do you review every letter from attorneys, everything? Do we as volunteer commissioners?
Yes, we do, over and over.
Every word. I'm sorry, and I'm sorry, is it Jenna or Jenna? I'm sorry, please.
I just, I was wondering, is the contact for-
Yes, and he'll be available afterwards to give you his contact information. Okay, great, all right, well, I think we have dealt with that, then, was there anything else on the timeline that we need to deal with?
There, yeah, so, we have a few other agenda items, not related to the Central Oregon Canal nomination, but as far as the review of the nomination itself, I think we completed all the public comment section and review.
Yeah, so, okay, because then we're gonna have comments, okay, all right, so the timeline, please settle.
Yep.
Okay, all right, now we can ask questions.
I just, this is Kelly Madden, and I just want to address the whole site visit, field trip thing, and I want to let you guys know how it works. I've been on this commission, how long have we been on it? Five years? I don't know how long. And as a retired schoolteacher, I've been the one that's been in charge of making, I call them field trips, and when I do these trips, I usually start planning, like, six months in advance, and if I would have known that the site visit was so important to you guys, it would have been really nice to know that, like, four, I feel like we just knew about four days before the water got turned on. And because we're all volunteers, we can't just get in a car and go hang out together, because we have to follow laws, if there's more than three of us together, it's a quorum, so we don't even get to hang out together, and we all like the same stuff, you know, so I just wanted to let you all know that if that's something that you want, it's not like we're saying we don't want to come visit you, but there's no money, there's no funds, and if you're gonna have a group of us go, it's a public meeting, and then you have to have, follow all the laws of the county. And because most of the people work and we are volunteers, we can't just, you know, pop in the car and come visit on a quick notice. So just to let you know, if that's something you're interested in, it needs a lot of time to plan, okay? Thank you.
And I'll help do it. Yes, we've got that figured out. Yes, please.
You're more than welcome to come down by driveway, anytime, off of Bear Creek. You can go down the canal right from there and check it out, one at a time, that's not a, that's not a bidding together, so that you can actually see what we're talking about, about, there's actually farmers and historical value and see those things, that's all we're saying. But, I'm giving you permission, you can come down by driveway, any day.
Thank you so much.
And if I may, just for the record, it's Mr. Grund, that made the offer, just so we have it officially on the record, great, and having seen it, it is terrific.
Jenna?
And he's got the bridge that crosses the canal, so actually, that's the best point of entry.
And it's historic.
And it's historic. I just wanted to note for the record, this nomination's been in place for over six months, and we haven't received a site visit, so he definitely would like one, but it's been in place for many, many months, and so I think planning could have happened by now, but we really appreciate if you could come see more.
I'm sorry, did you request it six months ago?
Yeah.
In writing to us?
Yeah.
Well, I've never, ever, I don't, I am sorry, we don't ever, as a group, remember getting that, I'm not trying to be contentious, but the first time I ever knew that there was the possibility of a site visit was something when we got that said that the canal was going to be turned on on April 9th, and it was like the 6th, and so I just didn't, I don't know, I didn't know that-
I remember, after the hearing for the nomination, I verbally invited, I know Pat's written many times, so, it's been a long time.
Yeah, there's many, opportunities, I've taken those as individual, not organizing it as a, as a, right, so, there's, I think there's two different opportunities there, and thank you for your diligence, yeah. Okay, good. I don't have my sight glasses on, anything else out there? Okay, all right, thank you so much for your time, if you guys feel like you need to go home and eat dinner, please feel free, we still have business to do, so, you can go do a McDonald's run for us. Okay, all right, yeah, thank you, good night. Zach, what you got? You want me to move on to the next agenda item?
Yeah, yeah, we can move on to discussion items.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Maybe we should pause for a few moments, let it be.
Stand up, everybody, do you know your address?
Uh, mailing address?
Well, just so that I can write you a letter for the property owner, and send it to the last-
CO Box 605.
We got one email.
We need to email it to you.
You can email, that'd probably be easiest.
Yeah. I remember reading it, I'm sorry, I've been so very busy. Who are you to, I mean, what do you do?
I'm a land use planner in Deschutes County.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you can reach me there.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you guys.
You're welcome, thank you, yeah, you're welcome.
This is the right place to submit it to, right?
Yes.
That's the best, yes. I hope you thank them, that's, I don't want to be their job, and they are volunteers, I really appreciate, I always appreciate volunteering.
Do you have the petition?
Yeah, and I'm just so simple. God, and I was buzzing out, and I was passing out, you know, and I've been working, I've been at work, I was at Worms for six this morning. I'm okay now, I just, I have, these are special glasses, that are light sensitive, but they're, I don't have my script sent yet, because they're still not done tweaking my, I've got a medical script in one eye, and I'm up at Casey every week, therapy, you know, we're just, you know, I'm still dorking with all that, I know, so I apologize.
Well, yeah, Zekaria told me, he's like, hey, Sharon, like, doesn't look like she's doing well, you're gonna have to take over.
But she won't, when I go down, I go down, but I hydrated with my port this morning, so hopefully that would keep me from passing out in the middle of meetings, I know, you know, it's like, what'd you do to your work, I hooked up to my IV for two hours, what'd you do?
So, is it like a palsy or something you've been doing?
Well, I've got, I had a pituitary tumor 20 years ago, so I've had 135 surgeries as a result of that, and then I got two rounds of Bell's palsy that I recovered from.
Yeah, so my best friend, she had Bell's palsy in high school, yeah, she, for weeks replaced her.
Well, some, yeah, see, and I-
She looked like a Salvador Dali.
Yeah, but I'm three, I'm not gonna recover, I'm totally, I'm like, I'm 70% paralyzed on the left side, I'm in some new studies of the case, so it's, actually, that's exciting, I may recover a little more, so.
I will, I'll speak louder into it, more directly.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes.
Never let us take a break, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay, so we have a few discussion items for the commission, the first is just a general update on the Sisters Country Historic Resources Inventory. So, last February, Diana Painter with Painter Preservation came and gave an overview of the project, she is on track and has completed Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the projects, she has made two trips to Sisters so far, and has done all the data gathering part of it, so she's in the process of writing the report and the context statements. She will be available in May for the regular, the next regularly scheduled May 7th meeting to give you a report, a final report on it. The final project won't be completed until the end of July, when the CLG project wraps up, just an FYI on there.
Zach, may I suggest that if we're still in the middle of our discussion, that we, our first priority will be discussing the nomination, if we have to hold her and not bring her into that meeting.
Yeah.
I just want to be mindful of that, because I'm sorry, but that's the most, you know, diligent thing we need to do right now.
Yeah, sounds good.
No offense to him on her work, but, you know, or she could send us a written, you know, email report or something.
Okay.
Thank you.
Will Diana be able to do a little bit of her presentation, what she's done so far? Is that-
That's the intent.
Yeah, that's the intent.
If there's time, otherwise I'd suggest you electronically send it to us.
Yeah, and one other important update on the Sisters Historic Resources project is that we took notes from the commission, recognize, and staff, and when Diana did the initial present, visit to Sisters, we realized, oh my goodness, how large of a project this is, and decided with Patrick Davenport, the Community Development Director with Sisters, that we, this go-around with this CLG funding, we would just focus on the city of Sisters and updating their RLS, the Reconnaissance Level Survey. So, it is no longer the entire Sisters Country, which was defined by the school district, and we're still going to incorporate or ask her to incorporate in her report, steps that the county can take to recognize rural properties down the road, but with the resources we have this time around, we realized that it wouldn't work out to do the full school district boundary.
Thank you, well, it's better to do a good job in a core area and then work your way out.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
The next item is a draft, Nick Leelak is gonna talk about the draft release of the annual work plan, so I'll turn it over to him.
Just at the highest level, we have a work session scheduled with the Landmarks Commission, I don't recall if it's the April 30th, or if it's May 7th, it's one of the upcoming meetings, but in any event, I'm sorry?
It's scheduled for May 7th.
May 7th, so, I'm just gonna hand it out for you to read it and to think about it, and then, at this point, yeah, so you've got a whole extra week, there's lots of pretty pictures and charts, so it's very, very user-friendly, and just one of the projects that we're working on, and you're probably aware of this, and it's been in the press a lot, as Commissioner Schmidling is aware of, is the Sisters Country Plan, so I'm gonna give you each a copy of the color draft plan, and there's information at the bottom regarding the public hearing schedule, and then these handouts we have for Sisters Country, so if you know, if you want to take multiple, you can hand them out, great, we're doing everything we can to maximize public input.
Okay, so what role do you want us to play? Do you want us to take a, make sure we show up at the hearings, or what?
In a couple of weeks, we'll have the work session with you, just, what we do every year is we just summarize what we have with Historic Preservation, Historical Society, the Historic Landmarks Commission, in here, and just for you to take a look at it, if there's anything you'd like to add, or not, then you're welcome to provide those comments, and then again, just-
Did you put this together?
I did.
It's lovely, there's pictures of our trip. Oh, yeah. Great. And it's the day the fire started. Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
See the pictures?
Did you guys need next to-
Well, thank you for the tour, it made, the tour made for some great photographs. They're on page 35, if you're looking for them, so.
So, with the Oregon Heritage Conference last week being what it was, and consuming so much time, and it was great, and part of the gossipy, but I kind of put on the backburner the preservation month, the kickoff events and stuff like that, and, thank you, Kelly, for reminding, so I, we have our events list pretty much final, I mean, we're to the point where we can't add anything more, we've got almost six pages worth of events throughout the month, it's phenomenal, and the poster is actually something that one of the Redmond Landmarks Commissioners put together for us, so that's pretty much ready. I just, we're gonna have a kind of a kickoff planning meeting on Wednesday at the museum, just to kind of go over the, just that event, Redmond Sea Hall, it's May 2nd, from 5:00 to 7:00.
Yes.
And, so I don't know if I got everybody, it was more kind of like as a proof draft sort of thing, so Zekaria, I know I copied you on it, but, once we have the final, and I'd like to get it completely wrapped up by Wednesday after our meeting, and then get that out, and do our press releases and get it on the Deschutes State Museum's website, and right now, there's nothing on there, so we're a little bit behind schedule in previous years, but, this is just, last week really consumed a lot of time, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, it's, I think it's gonna be good, I just, it seems like what happens every year is, is we get a lot of good momentum and then we don't, I don't know, it's just the, either the social media or not getting it out to the right avenues, whether it's, I don't know, TV, radio, you know, so, but anyway, it's a pretty good mix of events.
Just make sure that we have it, because we can, the county has a lot of social media to do a lot of blast.
Yeah. I'm very excited, because I'm working with the, thank you, the Redmond Parks and Rec, thank you, the Redmond Parks and Rec, she's working on redoing the Tetherow House, and so I'm helping them do a Child's Tetherow Pioneer Day.
Yeah, it's the Memorial Weekend, so, yeah, I told them not to let, I mean, until they get the inside cleaned up, I don't think they should have-
No, they're not going inside.
So, but, yeah, I mean, the grounds itself is just stunning, so.
And they'll be a mountain man there, too.
Hmm.
Show up.
Yeah, well, let, please do forward any final drafts, as I've been in the loop with those emails, so I will send them out to our Public Information Officer, we can get them posted through media releases and drum up as much- We can get them posted through media releases and drum up as much support as we can.
And then just show up at the open house, you know, the kickoff, because it's always been an event. It's Redmond, so now we gotta support it.
And it's not on a Friday. We have to support Redmond.
It's, it's a Wednesday, so.
Yeah.
It was too much, I mean, last year was a big conflict because of Sycamore Mile and.
No, 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 midweek's better. That's good. Good, good, good momentum.
The, the, and one thing I did put down on discussion items was just, uh, an opportunity for the commissioners to, to discuss the Heritage Conference. We can also bring this up in May if we wanna talk about the, the conference as well, but I, I attended, so did Nick. I, speaking for myself, I thought it was, it was a great conference. They had a lot of diversity in what they presented. I appreciate Commissioner Lecty presenting or moderating a presentation.
As I say, you don't know the half of what I ended up hauling college kids around. They got left out at the High Desert Museum and missed the bus and ran about the Sun River and.
Oh, my goodness.
What was going on, son? Oh, yeah, that Sunday, I was getting emails from other ones going, nah. So now I'm everybody's best friend, too. I wonder if you're just like you when I grow up. I'm like, oh, no, you don't.
We all do. Did Christine go to the Heritage Conference? Because maybe it'd be better to discuss it when she's there. She can get into it unless she's not coming to any meetings.
Well, I, you know, yeah, I don't know that what there is for input. I mean, it was just really inclusive and embrace even we all, I mean, we got, there were some, might be some skills that came out of the specific workshops. But I think our community did a great job of welcoming our visitors.
Yeah.
Uh, there were over two hundred people at the Preservation Awards at Sun River, which was just phenomenal. Like, we got to honor a lot of our elders. Worm Springs was recognized. We had keynote speaker, you know, so I think Central Oregon was well represented. And then next year is in, uh, May, so if you're able to go, uh, get it on your calendar, at least get it penciled out. It's in Medford, so that'll be fun, too, and they're, they'll use their historic district.
Next year, it's really focused on board and organization.
Yeah, so great thing for capacity.
And so I really hope that there's, um, as much focus on landmarks commissions and the public sector as there are the historical societies and nonprofits, which is critically important. But for us, as, as an organization, it'd be so beneficial to have that public sector.
Yeah, and I'll make sure I share that with Curry, too, so.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah, you're right. And, 'cause there's a lot of the challenges with, even with the historical societies, you know, whether you're in startup or transition or restart up. I mean, I get donate time on that every day, yeah, yeah, so, okay.
I, I loved having Ian and Jason on the call. I just, it just kind of triggered something. If, if we wanted to do sort of like a little conference recap, would it make sense to have Curry involved?
It's a great idea. Sure, yeah.
I don't know.
Well, it's also interesting to watch, it's also interesting to watch people listen, because people don't listen, just listen a lot, you know, anymore. And I just, heads were, and it was just very, it was very great to have that opportunity, because it's just a different way of getting information.
Mm-hmm.
I liked it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Anyway, it was good.
Just to put, to put on your calendars, six months before next spring, um, we are hosting the Oregon Chapter of the American Planning Association Conference at the River House in Bend in October. And Peter and I are the co-chairs for the conference.
So I dread.
So I, I have, I hesitate to share that with you, but, but you might, there might be some great sessions that you're interested in, in that as well. And, uh, I think there's generally a discounted price for commissioners and whatnot, but there might be interesting stuff to hear.
Volunteers in for free, right, if we wear little white shirts and host them?
Yeah.
And on that note, submission proposals are due this Friday, so if any of the commissioners have proposals.
I need a return.
Yeah.
Go for it, dude.
We'll extend the timeline for you.
Make a presentation.
Speaking of time, uh, this date that we've got penciled in is gonna be real tough for me to get through these materials and. You mean by the thirtieth? With the workload I've got currently.
Okay. Well, I, staff is flexible when, when we can meet, uh, definitely, and we'll announce it to the group and post it on the website and whatnot, so. Uh, it can, people can know about it. Um, so let us, I'll, I'll follow up with an email tomorrow, and we can get a conversation started on what the best date is moving forward.
And then on, um, is our next meeting in May? After that, is it August?
It's May seventh.
Or September? Do you, if you want me to do another trip?
Yes, please.
I would be glad to start working on it.
Okay.
Maybe we should go see the committee.
It's already on our calendar.
I'm sorry, it's already planned. I do it six months in advance.
You speak.
The, the last discussion item I have is an email that we received from Curry with the, the State Historic Preservation Office. She asked, she, one, mentioned this forum, a National Alliance of Preservation Commission Forum. And they are asking for photos of local commissions. You know, we don't need to attend, but they apparently want a collage of different photos of all the commissions standing in front of a, a landmark within their county or jurisdiction. So Nick has a few photos that he took in the annual work plan. So if you guys wanna nominate any photos that you would like to pass on, uh, know that the opportunity has been requested, so feel free to be in touch with me on that.
Is that an engagement opportunity for volunteers or strictly staff of commissions?
To attend the forum?
Well, yeah, 'cause I'm, I'm, well, yeah, I, I'm just thinking it might be a potential interest resource for somebody.
They, they, I, they welcome all commissioners, um, the, and, and staff as well. Our, our CLG budget right now is pretty much all accounted for.
Oh, I'm sure.
So that'd be something we, we would need to have further discussions about. If, I don't recall where it is. It's in Iowa or, um, back, back east.
Anyway, I just wanted to, you know, because again, I think you can, we, as volunteers can do a really good job when we can get to network like our visitors did last week. Thank you.
Yeah.
So I, I guess I'd like to, um, discuss the conference a little bit more, though, maybe on the seventh, um, when, when Chris is back, if that's possible. Or, and Bill, where's Bill?
Bill, no.
Bill, Bill messaged me that he could not make it. He had a prior engagement.
So you guys, if I could just be rude for a minute, if you, for me, you can see my world. I mean, I'm already booked out, you know, and I'm on the road ninety percent. So what, if the thirtieth doesn't work, what will work? Because I can tell you, when I walk out of here, I, I, you know, the next month will be gone, yeah. 'Cause Dennis is saying, and I'm sorry, if we need to go, you want me to go off record and close the meeting to have this discussion, or is this okay?
Well, I just have one other thing.
I think we're on the hunt, Bill. Have a meeting on April third.
'Cause we announced it, right? That's kind of what I was thinking, yeah.
But it doesn't mean you have to have a decision.
Exactly, not at all.
You can meet shortly and say, you know, we could give you all the, we could give you all the written materials that we receive in one week's time.
Yeah.
Pass that out to you. Zechariah could summarize it, and then you, you guys could think offline, going through ZEC, so we don't have a, a, a meeting, you know, uh, over the computer. But then come back with some dates that, that, through ZEC, and presumably there'll be convergence on one date that works for everybody, and then we'll just announce it after we give you the materials and if you have any other questions.
After the thirtieth, you mean?
Yes.
It just has to be before June twenty-second?
Yes.
We can't make it like next year.
Yeah, right. And I think, and I do think the Board of County Commissioners is likely gonna be interested in providing their own recommendation. And largely will be interested to see how, how this commission grappled with it. And so I would, I wouldn't recommend, you know, convening on June eighteenth, you know, 'cause then there's, it'll be impossible to, to convey it. But, so my suggestion is, um, prepare for a meeting on the thirtieth, even if it's, you know, we have a meeting, the purpose of the meeting, and Zechariah can state this, is just to, to provide the written materials that were submitted once the, the meeting closed, uh, on, on April, um, what are we, the sixteenth, on the sixteenth, yeah. And so, so it's the one week materials, and, and then you could work with ZEC between now and then to identify dates in May that work for you. And if there's one that all of you share, then he'll announce, he'll let you know electronically, and that'll be announced in the mem, in your packet. And then it could be announced to everyone publicly, um, and we would of course, uh, convey that to all the parties that we have contact information, so people don't have to come in and experience a very short meeting. So that would be, that would be my, my suggestion for, for trying to figure out a time that works for everybody.
So is that in lieu of May seventh, or then we're, we're talking about adding another one?
If May seventh works for everybody, we, we would go with May seventh. If, if, if not, if you wanna, if there's still too much going on, then we would try to find a date, and it doesn't have to necessarily be on a Monday, but we'll have to find a, an appropriate meeting room at this location for that deliberation.
One, one comment to expand on Peter's, Peter's words. The, uh.
I'm sorry, I was just clarifying that one of his.
The, so May seventh has a fairly full agenda as it is right now, so we, um, and this, again, it's up to the commission to decide the parameters of this meeting. If, if it's closed session and, and it's just you all deliberating and filling out this form, that, that's totally an option. But it could, it could expand into a, a very long, late meeting, and we just wanna be mindful of all your guys' volunteer time, so. But if it, it works to do one long meeting rather than break it up into two nights, that's, that's a possibility. Staff will, will be here whenever.
And I, I don't see the Board of County Commissioners getting to this until probably June fourth.
That's what I want.
And the, and the key is because they have budget the last week of May. And so it's one of these keys, if we, if we don't get, if, if the commission, if this commission doesn't finish your work until the fourteenth, we may get to them just as a starting point, the twenty-first or the twenty, twenty-third on one of those meetings, but that, it's, but they can't complete anything until, and we, we did, by the way, just find out the SHPO meeting is, is in Redmond.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's confirmed.
So in any event, we see the, the, the board's process will probably go right up until about the twentieth. Yeah, and all things being equal, I know that the state, Ian Johnson with SHPO, ideally, of course, it doesn't have to work this way, but if he could get, if he could receive the county's input, you know, a week prior, then he can get it into the packet, as opposed, as opposed to just, you know, imagine at their meeting, oh, here's the, the, the Deschutes County's recommendation, and it's just so much, it's so much, it's somewhat daunting for them to read it.
Well, you know, I, I would be navigating the most transparent process, given the, you know, the, what's happened to, to, through today, sorry.
Yeah, so you may, you, you know, you could work back, you know, depending if you wanna have a special meeting, just work back from maybe the first week of June and see what, see what's available. And we do, I mean, yeah, Mr. Ledes, you know, that was a two-hundred-page submittal, although.
A lot of its attachments.
A lot of it is, is, he was not here, but I, but it, that was more, I think, um, very assertive on terms of his strong opinions about the way the process has been handled in the past and his concerns. Right. And so, as opposed to, you know, now that I think it's transparent, there was, this was a very, I think, productive meeting, cleared, cleared and set the table at the same time. I think now it's, you know, this commission should be concentrating on, okay, let's look at the criteria, let's look at the submittal, let's review CI, no disrespect to the testify, testimony from the general public, but it's all about the criteria. And, um, as Ian pointed out to us, um, at the conference, at several conference calls, you know, one can bring up ancillary issues, that's important, he touched on the phone, but it's, it's really not what his committee's gonna be examining. It's really the five criteria, so to, you know, to the extent that we can kind of categorize testimony, you know, general testimony, and then, you know, the bulk of it is gonna be patch submittal as, and then COID's respectful response.
So COID can respond properly about the, the general public?
No, the gen, I, I, my point was just that I think COID's response hit the five criteria, whereas the general public was, it was more, it, it wasn't really honed in on the cri, the five criteria. And whereas, you know, if, if this commission felt like there was something important about water conservation, that's meaningful to share with the State Historic Preservation Office and their committee, but they won't use that testimony as a basis for reviewing that, the nomination. That's all I was trying to say.
Good. I'm glad that got cleared up.
Some of the criteria is really masked, I mean, between, in terms of material we have to digest, you know, I mean, we're, in one comment, it, he, uh, COID implied that the whole canal system there was lined with new riprap and, and shot creek. And in fact, it's, it's patchwork, and much of the original work is still available, if you read or listen beyond that. But what's truthful? I haven't been there. I haven't walked in it, in the dry section. I don't know.
And again, as, as Ian pointed out, and certainly staff, we're not, we're not, uh, pushing or subliminally directing to, to one decision or not. I mean, I think, you know, the, the, the three of you with, with, of course, Kelly's perspective as ex officio, you know, your, your observations and opinions, you know, are, are meaningful. So however, whatever you conclude after the materials, you know, it, it takes you one direction. That's okay.
And the thing that's the pity is the people that know the most about what we're talking about, we can't talk to them.
Mm-hmm.
You know? And so it's like, you guys know, we know more about this than anybody, but it's, we can't discuss it. So I always think, oh, am I doing the right thing? Am I doing the wrong thing? What do they think? I don't know.
Yeah, and you can imagine how frustrating it is for the proponent and the applicant. No, I, I got that wrong, sorry, but anyway, yeah, and, and.
We, we agree.
One correction to the record, you talked about the deadline for more written input as May twenty-third, not April twenty.
Oh, did I?
Yeah.
Oh.
I, I wrote it down as April.
Okay.
It's away from today.
I know you record these, so.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for catching that. Okay. Anything else, you guys?
Yeah, yeah, one of the things that I wanted to say that, um, this is, it really is a separate topic, but it's part of the discussion tonight, is, you know, once this whole process started and we realized, yes, there is this MPD out there, I actually, we actually asked COID, you know, it would be great at some point for you to present that to our Landmarks Commission.
Yeah.
Because you did all this extraordinary work, all the canals, with an expert in the field, and it, we went to SHPO and it's where? And what impact does that have on us? And we, and we decided at the time, that presentation is not ripe during this.
Right.
Process. But we don't wanna lose it because.
Well, the MPD, though, is that, does that receive any kind of certification, or is it just a commentary from PhD?
I, I think SHPO accepts it, but I don't know what that means.
Yeah, I don't know what that is either.
No, but it clearly was implied tonight that there could definitely impact, uh, process and procedure, though, right? I mean, I heard that.
Yeah, that was implied.
We should, so, anyway, maybe we think about scheduling that, either for August or November or something this year.
What, what impact it might have on our work.
Yeah.
Just in general terms.
Yeah.
No, I.
That was only the comment I wanted to make, is that that was kind of the light bulb that went off for us as well.
Oh, yeah.
What a great piece.
Is there a process for approving MPDs?
These are all great questions.
Yeah, good question. That is very.
My guess is if we sent an, uh, an email to SHPO, somebody would respond to us. You know, we just don't understand it. We need to understand how it impact, impacts our work.
Are there other MPDs in Central Oregon somewhere?
Isn't, isn't the Saniam wagon trail a multiple listing? So it's like, it's, it's, the sum is, what is it? The sum, the, the, the sum of the parts is greater than the whole?
Mm-hmm.
So it's not one specific marker.
But the landmark, I mean, the Deschutes Land Trust section.
Yeah.
Is part of it, yeah.
Right, but it, so they look at that whole influence or impact, but there's not one.
Right, and they don't say this is a local.
Distinctive, you know, area. So I don't know if that's, if that's a, um, an example where, you know, you, the canal still operates in its current state and it's still recognized for its contribution, but it's, you know, you, you don't, and, and it probably has to be maintained in a certain way, but there's not one singular location that really, you know, is, is the, is the noteworthy aspect of the canal, so.
Well, and it makes sense that they would eliminate from historical record, at least, that section that's most problematic to their efficient.
Right.
Maintenance.
And I think they, I think, I think Craig, or I think it was Craig, not Matt Singer, who, Craig Harrell, who was acknowledging, you know, they have some sections that are not, that are, um, you know, not being addressed within their, their master plan or their, their maintenance plan. Others are, and so, you know, obviously they're, and I'm just reiterating what I thought I heard him say, is that, you know, they have multiple responsibilities, uh, one of which is to delivering water to their patrons.
Right.
So, you know, that's.
Economically.
Right.
There's only so much water.
Right, yeah.
All righty.